I would like to call the April regular meeting of the West Tonka School Board to order. If you're ready, please rise and join us in the...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chair moves for approval of the agendas. Are second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Announcements. West Tonka staff and retiree recognition is May 3rd in the Performing Arts Center at 7:30 a.m. And the next regular board meeting is May 6th, 6:00 p.m., right here. At this time, I would like to invite Jeff Pears enough to present and share our success.
Thank you. Appreciate you having me here tonight. Tough to get students here. We have a few in the audience and I'll call them up as we get going. But we were supposed to play a baseball game tomorrow, but looking at the forecast, we moved that from tomorrow to today and that affected a couple of folks. Lacrosse game tonight, away lacrosse game. And so kids doing a lot of different things. But we've had just some wonderful successes over the winter season. I'll start by just recognizing our wrestlers. Cole Munster Tiger at 127 pounds plays sixth. Jack Nelson, 139 pounds. Jack, three-time state champion. He was a point short this year. He took second. Obviously, Jack disappointed in that. But last week, Becca Nugger, our communications specialist, met with Jack and Gary Erdman. Gary is a 1960 graduate and also is our only three-time state champion in our school district. And I can't wait to see the story that Becca gets out of those two. I asked her before I introduced her to Gary, I said, "Have you ever met Gary?" She said, "No." And I said, "You are in for a treat." Gary walked in in his leather jacket, 1960 logo on the back. It was priceless. So Jack plays second. Cooper Rowe, who we recognized earlier this year, I believe in January. Cooper, state champion, 152 pounds. And then with us tonight, we have Delaney Parker. Delaney, come on up. Delaney Parker is our first-ever state wrestling entrant to represent Mount West Tonka in the state tournament as a female. Yeah. When Delaney qualified for state, I sent her an email congratulating her and telling her, "Hey, you just made history." And it was awesome. And then shortly thereafter, Annette, mom, sent me an email and said, "Jeff, you made Delaney's day." And I said, "Well, she made mine too because it's really awesome that she placed." I'm gonna actually have Delaney speak just a little bit about her experience. You may remember, I believe, this is our second year that we have had girls wrestling at Mount West Tonka officially. You approved that probably two years ago. And so last year was the first year that we officially had our own girls wrestling program. And we'd like to recruit some more girls. So this is a good way to do it. So Delaney, just tell us a little bit about the experience.
Well, trying out wrestling for the first time was pretty scary. Going into a room with a ton of guys and everyone's just looking at, "There's a girl in here?" And I think my cousin is who got me started. He was a three-time state champion in Nebraska and everyone in my family's wrestled. So I'm like, "Well, I've seen them do it. I bet I could." And the team, like at first, the guys were kind of like, "Oh, it's kind of weird. There's a girl here." But it took them maybe two weeks and I'm a part of the team now. It's really fun getting to wrestle and state was an amazing experience. And it's just, I've won it so much. I've grown as a person wrestling with just like self-integrity that it's on you and you help the team, but you also help yourself a lot.
Is this your first year then?
Uh, second year.
Second year, okay.
Two seasons, but first full year.
Okay. Are you a senior or what year are you?
Uh, I am a sophomore.
So you got a couple more years?
Yeah.
Awesome. Any other questions?
The boys, have the boys scared now?
I can't scare them. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're congratulating Mount wrestlers. So it's nice. Congratulations. Two more years, too. I asked Coach Munster Tiger to give me a quick write-up. He said it was another historic season in state turning for the White Hawk Wrestling Squad. Our boys had three state place winners, two finalists, and a state champion, which placed us ninth in the state as a team in Class Double-A. We also had our first-ever girls' state entrance. Congratulations. Boys swimming. Coach Hanson says, "Boys swim and dive. We had our largest team that we've had in the past seven years." Bryce Helms, who has been a captain for the past three years and a state qualifier for the past two years. Bryce also leaves the team as the 100 free team record holder. So congratulations to Bryce. That program, this year we had eight boys. We share a coach with Orno. It's a great opportunity for our kids to continue to swim. It would be really difficult to run a program with eight boys in our own pool. And so to be able to train with them and compete with them when they have meets has really been great for us. Our math team earned its first-ever trip to state by winning both, the section and the division at state. And we took eighth out of 16 teams. We had five individuals finish in the top 10 out of 75 students in the division. And I believe that Tor Erall is our only... Tor, are you the only one? Oh, come on up, Henry. Tor and Henry. Perfect. Come on up, you guys. So we've got, we had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, seven students here on our math team. Coach Lisa Paul runs our math team this year. She's done it in the past. She's kind of went back and forth with Griffin Rush. And she came back this year and just led us to an amazing season. And these guys were part of it. So I'm gonna have you just share a little bit about that experience. This is Henry Erall. What grade are you on?
I'm a 9.
Thanks, Brian.
I just started this year and I had noticed Mr. Sobiet talking about it because I had it from my math teacher. And eventually he said, "Since I was one of the smartest kids in the class, I should go in." And so I did. And it was pretty fun. It wasn't exactly what I thought it was gonna be, but it was fun. And I met a lot of people during it, so yeah.
How was it what you expected or what was...
I didn't really know what I was expecting. I thought it was kind of gonna be like, you go up on stage and you're like, "Answer questions." But it's more just you go into a room and you do a worksheet. So not as exciting.
Well, I've been in it in more than one year. I don't know how many I've been in it, but when I was younger, my family and brothers and sister kind of made me do it. But I stuck with it. This year it was really good to have Ms. Paul. She really helped the team. And then also Rohan was one of the main people. He made us go to like captains' practices and stuff. So I don't know if we would've made it without him. So it was just really great to see the team do so well.
Where was it? Where was state?
Ooh, I don't even remember.
You remember? So congratulations. Yeah, nice job. Congratulations. Thanks, guys, for being here tonight. Little bit about dance. I love it. I asked for just a few sentences. I got two pages here. But not for Molly. It was Coach Spanier. So 23-24 Dance Team season was one for the record books coming off a very successful season last year. The Hockeys continued their success on and off the gym floor in 23-24. We welcomed several new members to the team fielding a B squad of 17 athletes. JV Kick and B squad Jazz teams had so much growth this year and several top-three finishes within the conference and among other teams around the state at Invitationals. Varsity team claimed another Wright County Conference Championship and two second-place finishes at the section tournament this past February. Varsity Kick and Jazz consistently scored the highest scores in the history of our program. Just when we thought they saw peak scores last season, these athletes pulled out impressively high scores that have never been achieved in our program. On January 5th, the Jazz team performed at the University of Minnesota's Best of the Best Showcase at Williams Arena, where the top college and high school teams performed their competitive routines. This was the first year that Mount West Tonka was asked to attend. We proudly represented West Tonka in a gym packed with thousands of fans. Lastly, the season wrapped up at the state tournament once again, where Hockeys placed third in Double-A Varsity Jazz and fourth in Varsity Kick after a tough tiebreaker loss for third. The Mount West Tonka Dance Team also received the Academic Gold Award, which is the highest academic team award for cumulative team GPA. And Madeline, are you the only dancer here? Madeline Whitty, come on up. Madeline is a junior and I'm gonna have her talk a little bit. Let us know if you do both Jazz and Kick?
Yes, I do.
And then tell us just a little bit about the experience.
Absolutely. Dance is something that is very special to like many people. Either you watch or you're a dancer, dance can make anyone really feel something. Our Jazz this year was dedicated to the Nash family, to Tommy Nash. We did a Harry Styles song and that was kind of like his favorite song and that was very important to the family. And even though this year was not like what we expected for the results, but it was really close competition. And we're just working really hard and improving and making sure that everything is going great. And we've got one more year left, so hopefully we can maybe get that state championship again, but yeah.
Thank you. Congratulations. Hold on. I didn't hear something. And then I just want to make sure that I recognize all students. So on our math team, Tor and Henry who are here. Also members of that team, Luke Carlson, James Marth, Cormac Schaefer, Zach Van Nelson, Jaeger Reteen. Our dance team, other than Madeline, Mia Abernathy, Ada Vadel, Maddie Bozekowski, Olivia Carlin, Maddie Carlson, Emily Hollenstein, Allison Kreiser, Alexa Leonard, Haley Lockwood, Sophia Lirikas, Marissa Nelson, Cassie Nemeczek, Ally Ogil, McKenna Seitz, Maisy Wheeler, and Madeline, Aubrey Bruckner, Sienna Dimmer, Teagan Hayder, Jessica Herniman, Amelia Holmberg, Paige Johnson, Suzie Marth, Gillian O'Meara, Ella Salvati, Ellie Schaefer, and Lily Titler. And this year, we also sent a Boys Alpine member to the state tournament. I tried to figure out how long it's been since we've sent a male to the State Alpine Tournament, but Marshall Morrison was our representative there. Marshall's playing lacrosse and so not able to be here tonight. But we've had just an incredible, incredible winner. Able to, as you came in tonight, hopefully you saw it, but if you didn't, maybe on your way out, April is my month. And so I've got some hardware out there and some artwork. It's incredible what our students are able to achieve and it's thanks to your support that we're able to do that. So thanks for having me and thanks again for this support.
Just would like to thank the parents and the students that did come. It's, we know that you're really busy and for us to celebrate your success means a lot to us to be able to say that we appreciate your dedication, the sacrifices that you're making to achieve the levels that you are. I love the story about captains' practice and you look at some of the qualities of these kids and it's really who's who of our student body. And so I'm really impressed at all that you accomplished, whether it's in the classroom or on the field or the court. And just want to say, thanks for being here for us to say congratulations.
Is there anybody here tonight for public comments at all? Then we'll move on to the Student Rep Report.
Oh, we got Natalie again.
Yes, I'm back. All right. So Jeff covered some of this stuff, so awesome. All right. So starting off with our activities. Our Student Senate just had a Step the Bus Drive from March 1st to 7th. And our high school raised $3,129. And then Grandview and Hilltop and Shirley Hills also had Step the Bus Drive. It's that we're really successful. Our Student Senate also hosted a student-versus-staff basketball game for... We didn't do it last year, but we did it the year before on April 4th and we had it as a fundraiser for Make-A-Wish, which was really successful and had a lot of participation from our school. Prom is on May 4th at Lafayette Club with the theme of Down in the Bayou. And Grand March Incarnation will be at 5:30 in our gym and is open for everyone to attend. DECA State Competition was March 10th through 12th at the High Green Sea in Minneapolis. And we had a record of 79 DECA members make it to finals and 40 made it to ICDC this year, which is also a record. And that will take place April 26th to May 1st in Anaheim, California. The Mount West Tonka Talkabots for Robotics won first place at the Northern Lights Regional Competition in Duluth on March 6th. And they are leaving for Houston, Texas tomorrow. Math League, like Jeff said, commutes to state on March 11th and they did really well. Recently this Saturday, Orrin Butterfield qualified for the state speech meet in the category of storytelling and he's going to commute this Saturday at state. The National Honors Society is growing its relationship with We Can this year and they just helped them raise $4,000 for a new freezer. And they also have their blood drive on March 11th and the roadside cleanup this past Saturday. Moving on to arts. Hilltop just presented the Operetta on March 1st and 2nd and it brought in the highest crowd Hilltop has ever seen. The Spring Musical Footloose for our high school just opened last week and it was last weekend and will continue this weekend on Friday and Saturday and Sunday. There are over 65 students all across grades 8 through 12 in this and tickets are $7 for students and seniors and $12 for adults. So you should all go this weekend. We just had six Mount High School students recognized in the 2024 Minnesota Schoolastic Art Awards Competition with sophomore Emma Koval and junior Trisyn Rockstan earning Gold Key awards in ceramics and glass categories. And Leo Kupski, Peyton Waltz, JD Heinz, and Axel Anderson also won awards at this event. Lastly, the West Tonka Community Theater is getting ready for their summer production of Roger and Hammerstein's Cinderella, which will have additions April 25th to 27th. Moving on to academics. MCA Testing is happening at all of our schools right now. And students at our high school are also preparing for AP tests, which will take place in May. Lastly, with athletics. Obviously, our winter seasons had really great seasons with student dive and Hockeys and wrestling notably. And then lastly, we have track and field, boys and girls across, boys and girls golf, baseball, softball, and boys tennis, all starting their spring seasons last week and this week. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to the Treasurers Report, Ralph.
We've had total cash donations so far for this year. We get in March contributions with Ruff Anderson. Swim Team, West Tonka Recognition Event, $300. Krause Anderson, West Tonka Recognition Event, $600. Old Architects, West Tonka Recognition Event, $1,000. Allison Houston, West Tonka Wings, $100. UMR Inc., West Tonka Wellness, $2,765.70. Lauren Devon, Hilltop Primary School, $20. Shirley Hills PTO, Shirley Hills Primary School, $3,213.16. GMS PTO, Grandview Middle School, $3,778.50. Charity's Aid Foundation, Mount West Tonka High School, $87.32. West Tonka Hockey Boosters, West Tonka Voice Hockey Team, $3,886.32. West Tonka Hockey Boosters, West Tonka Girls Hockey Team, $2,025. WM Cunningham Community Education, $500. Butch Humbert, Larry Exum Memorial Scholarship, $100. Long Lake Fire Department, Long Lake Fire Department Scholarship, $1,000. Crew at Law Office, Eric Hagan Memorial Scholarship, $500. Bombfire Department, Bombfire Department Auxiliary Scholarship, $1,000. Northwest Tonka Lions, Hilltop Wolf Ridge Scholarships, $1,000. Northwest Tonka Lions, Shirley Hills Wolf Ridge Scholarships, $1,000. Friends of Mount West Tonka High School First Robotics, $14,121.49. Those are good friends. James Devlin, First Robotics, $1,000. Therese Schombach and Peter Bedden, First Robotics, $750. Cynthia and Michael Tsipas, First Robotics, $2,618. Alex Turard, First Robotics, $1,000. Greg Peterson, First Robotics, $1,000. And Francis Kabowski, First Robotics, $1,000.
One more there. Go back up five. Sarah Delevaga.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Sarah Delevaga, First Robotics, $100. Thank you. And, Mr. Chair and fellow board members, I looked at the check ledger and surveyed checks and all seems to be in good order.
Thanks, Ralph. Are there any school board committee reports at this time? If not, we'll move on to Teaching and Learning. Mark, yours.
Thank you, General Elder. First of all, we do have some great friends for robotics. There's a pretty impressive list that you shared there, Ralph. Also, tonight, being a former math teacher, it was a lot of fun to hear about our student that went to the State Math League. I think that's the first time, at least in my career here, that we've had students go to the state tournament for mathematics. That's exciting. Exciting to see that. Okay, so I have just a few items for you here tonight. And first of all, the Department of Ed, over spring break, released the 2023 graduation rate. And that is something that is released for all school districts across the state of Minnesota. And for the four-year rate for Mount West Tonka High School, we came in at 92.65%. Now, one would think that calculating a graduation rate is a simple piece of math. It's, you know, just a top number divided by a bottom number. There's a lot of depth to it. But to keep it at a high level tonight, that 92.65% represents our graduation rate for four years. But you notice below that, there's a five-year rate and a six-year rate. And the reason that occurs, if you look at that first table versus school year 2023, we also count dropouts, continuing students, and unknowns. Dropouts are students that can just leave a high school, not just during the senior year, but at any time. And they don't show up in another school system. We don't know where they went. So the state needs those dropouts. Continuing students are typically our special education students that are in extended-yeared programs. So this year, for 2023, we had nine students. But eventually, after a couple more years, those kids graduate. And that's why you'll notice your five-year, six-year, even seven-year graduation rate keeps going up because those kids are graduating. And then when you have an unknown, those are students that were with us the entire year last year. But for some reason, they did not show up the first day of school. And they didn't show up for the rest of like first quarter. And we don't know where they went. They can move out of state. They can move to a private school. We simply don't know why we call them unknown. And I put the 2022 data in there for you. And you'll see the four-year right there. You'll notice that the unknown number was five. One of the things that we've implemented this year is that we know exactly every student that are in all these different categories. And we've tightened up our processes. We've tightened up our communication channels, especially for unknowns, that we expect you back the first week of school. If we don't see you, we're making phone calls and we're tracking down to know where those students are. Once we know where those students have landed and they're in a high school setting, then we can change the graduation code for those students. And they do count for our graduation rate. So I'm happy with the 92.65. Our aim is always 95%. We compare the graduation rates across our area of neighboring districts. We're right in the ballpark with else. And again, our goal is 95%, but wanted to share that with you tonight. The other thing I wanted to share with you is just a quick update. You've heard me talk with you about the Read Act and this is the new mandate from the state legislature and the Department of Ed where they talk about specific screeners in reading that all school districts need to implement. We're good on that one. They talk about district-approved, districts should use approved reading programs from the Department of Ed. We are using Wonders at the elementary level. That is still in consideration of being an approved program. That system, that structure the state has made has gotten bogged down with making recommendations. They have some recommendations, but more work to be done. Again, I have full confidence in our program that we're using. And the last piece that I want to mention tonight is the professional development requirement. And that is what is being mandated across the state school systems, a very specific reading professional development. And in that area are five pillars of reading that we need to train all staff on. And then the state has come out with, I'll call it Phase 1 and then Phase 2, that next year, we need to train all of our elementary teachers, all of our K-12 social education teachers, reading intervention teachers, administrators like myself, building principles in the science of reading. And as I've shared with you, some of the challenges is simply the aggressive timeline that they put on all districts. Like, we have to have all this training done for Phase 1 by July 1st of next year, which is pretty much next year. So what is happening right now is that Consortium of Reading Excellence in Education Core, this is one of the options that we're using now, that they have signed the contract with the state and we actually have submitted our roster of students. So we'll have 30 elementary staff and 30 secondary special education staff participating in this program that'll start next month. There's letters programming and there's one called Early Letters, Early Letters, Early Childhood. I can't tell you tonight when that contract will be signed between the state and letters. And probably there'll be a delay on that. That is some of the challenges we have. It is absolutely the best training you could ever find for staff. The issue is the timing. The issue is the timeline. And it is challenging that Core has everything ready to go. We're just waiting for the level to be pulled. Letters, we're just kind of in limbo right now along with all... Letters, we're just kind of in limbo right now, along with all the other districts across Minnesota with that.
Do you do both or one of the other?
Yeah, we're going to be doing both.
Both?
So we can, staff can choose. Staff can choose.
So staff only have to do one or the other?
Correct.
You're offering both?
Correct.
Okay.
The letters is the absolute gold standard, and you also notice about double the hours. But we have many staff that if they're going to do it, that's what they want to do.
Do staff get, like, do they get continuing ed credits for this? Do they get compensation?
Yeah, we're able to offer them CEU credits.
Okay.
Ours, rather. And we're working this into all our workshop days and flex time. We are, we really feel it's important, we have to work this into their contracted days. So that's been the challenge. But we're making that work. We're making that work. So we are waiting, though, for this other training to come through. But we have the first one, Core, ready to go.
And as a former math teacher, you're supportive of reading excellence.
I probably get the most. Absolutely. So you'll hear more about that. You'll probably hear more through your own school board communications and other updates that you get, all those board members, about the READ Act. But wanted to give you that here tonight. And then also, without saying, state testing has started, and we are off to a great start, knock on wood, that we have, by the end of, the first week of May, will complete about twenty-seven hundred state tests here in the district. I was just over at Hilltop and Shirley Hills today, and third grade and fourth grade started testing. The high schools started testing last week at grade ten, grade eight reading. High school starts math tomorrow, grade eight and grade eleven. Everything is going very smoothly. And it's not, one, the technology is working, but two, it's the boots on the ground and our administrative team that is really, and the teachers that are working very hard to make it the best testing environment possible for our students. And when I'm in those classrooms today, they're hunkered in. Those kids, they're focused, they got their little mints, and they got their pencils, and they got the headphones on, and they're taking it seriously. Results won't be out, formal results until about the end of July. But so far, I see good things happening with the results. And I just want to add tonight, as you heard Natalie tonight, tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, rather, the Taga Bots take off to Houston, Texas for World's Championship. They are ready to go. They've been practicing every night over at the high school. Pretty jazzed group of thirty-two kids that are going to be going to Houston, and really excited to see what's going to happen down there. And just realize, they're competing against teams just like them, that have one or regional or two regionals in their own state or country. So it's the top of the top they're competing against. And I really feel they're ready to go with that.
How's their fundraising going and stuff? Because they had to raise a lot of money.
We raised about twenty-eight thousand.
Nice.
For this trip. Pretty amazing, again. A great thank you to our sponsors, and as you heard in the report tonight, and the donations. People really came out to make this a affordable trip.
Well, this group, like, they came to the Rotary meeting, gave a great presentation and stuff like that, and, you know, your online donations and stuff like that. It was really impressive having those people.
Yeah, they're great kids.
Teams from all over the country or teams from all over the world?
All over the world. This is where they, yeah. So, yeah, it is. It'll be a great experience for kids that maybe haven't reached out beyond the Midwest for them. And then, as you heard too, we have our DECA team, record forty students going to internationals in Anaheim. That'll be at the end of April, and always a wonderful event. There's a picture of, from the state tournament, about a hundred and sixty kids that were downtown Minneapolis for that. And again, we are well represented and well respected in this circle too, of who we are as White Hawks.
You didn't hear if they're running their Bingo Simon auction thing again this year?
Well, I heard they were doing Bingo. Sue Simonsen had shared that.
Last week was Bingo. I didn't hear about it.
There's still room to donate.
So some exciting things, and we'll hear more back in the report how they did so far. All right, this is my team up.
Move on to the financial report. Kathy?
Evening, Board. I have my monthly financial report. I'll be reporting the April 1st snapshot of our enrollment, as well as our revenue and expenditures through the end of March. Okay. I always like when this chart gets full, because you can kind of tell we're coming to the end of the school year. We're April 1st, and we are reporting two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight students. We have just a handful less than the prior month. There are two students that needed some alternative education settings, and we're planning on those students returning. Expenditures through the end of March, we have collected twenty-one million, five hundred and four thousand, or fifty-six, about fifty-six percent of our budget, which is pacing real close to the prior year. Expenditures are reporting through the end of March at twenty-five million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, or sixty-six point six percent of our budget, which is identical to the prior year. So that was kind of fun to see. And outside of that, items going on in the business service department. We are working on our adopted budget. This week, our building principals and department heads will be getting their budget worksheets to complete for next fiscal year. And we will be presenting all of this information at the June meeting. Part of the budget planning and prep process is to seek insurance quotes each year for property liability and workman's comp. That's in progress, so we'll have more information forthcoming. The month of April each year, I team up with Mark Femright, and we have a Title I amendment window, actually not just Title I, all the title programs. And we reconcile, and we go through each program to make sure that we're capturing all the funds and putting those to best use for our students. And so we'll close that up at the end of the month. And lastly, we have a busy agenda on our May 30th board financial report. We'll be reviewing the budget before it comes to the board meeting in June. And I believe that's all I have tonight. If anyone has questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Kevin?
Thank you, Chair Wohlner. April, April's a really exciting month. You get, you've got still a couple months left of school, and a lot of preparation is starting to come to competition. And so you look at your primary age kids, and they've been at it, they're grinding hard still, and whether it's state tests or adventures of art or other things that are going on, they're, they're really, they're in a good spot with school. And it's, it's fun to see the momentum and the efficiency and how they understand routines. And as they've stayed on with the different subjects and they keep on going deeper, there's a lot of energy there. And I think when you look at things like, we talk a lot about DECA, we talk a lot about robotics, and we should. I mean, these kids have accomplished wonderful things. What a culture, that you have that many students outside their classes deciding to compete, if it's robotics, if it's DECA. Or you take a look at the musical. If you have not seen Footloose, it is, I'm going on Saturday. My daughter's gone twice. She went once, and she says, I'm going right back, it's that good. One of the students that won speech is also in the musical. Some of these kids that are in robotics aren't going to robotics because they're in the musical. And you see that sometimes these kids are involved in multiple things. But you also have a number of kids, that is their thing. So regardless, if you're doing a lot of things, or if that really is what you like, it's fun at this time of the year because it comes to performance and it starts moving ahead. In May, we start kicking off celebrations, and there's one after another. And those of you that have had kids that have gone through our system, you know how fast May is, because you start off, and there's an athletic banquet, and there's a scholarship night, and before you know it, it's graduation. And you just keep on, keep on. So I always love this time of the year because there's an energy. There's an energy amongst our principals right now because we're preparing for the next year, and we're wrapping up this year. To give you an example, you'll see different things with staffing. Right now, I'm really, really proud of our principals, directors of getting on the interviewing. We know that when we, our best chance of finding the best people is to get on that right away. And they're really busy. There's a lot of things competing for their schedule and their time, and they prioritize that. And I can't thank them enough for their effort there. You're going to see a number of action items we go to, what do we go to here, N today? I want to just take a little bit, use my time to describe what's coming up. The first one is the approval of boys volleyball. We've had boys volleyball now in the district as a club sport for a number of years, and like with a number of activities. If they can show that they can keep a team after a number of years, we move it on to adopting it from club to a state high school. It gives them some different opportunities. And so this is set in spring. It's growing some popularity in the state, and we continue to have a group of, group of kids that are really interested in it. In boys volleyball, that's not just West Tonka. We have some district, other districts around us, like we do an Alpine ski, where they come into our district and compete. And so we host and we share the cost of what it takes to put on those activities. Your next two action items are with the renewal of our medical and our dental. I want to thank the board years ago for going self-insured. That's really, really served our district incredibly well. We continue to do a really nice job of staying below what you would consider the average rate of growth of these plans, and that is due to design. That's due to a good group of employees that take part of this, our membership is good. And then obviously, there's a little bit of it that you have to be fortunate. You want that for your staff, that they're in good health. But all of those things come together, and we're really pleased. One thing that's changing this year in law is that you go out for bid every two years. And we were with Preferred One, and Preferred One got bought out by United Health. And in this process of this next bid, now Health Partners was really the winning bid for us to go forward. So our employees are going through a shift with this, which we're prepared for, but it's obviously an effort for some of our individuals that are on these plans and also our HR department. You see a change here with facilities, and that's D and E. Since 2006, we've had a contract with Dasher Management, so it started the spring before I became superintendent. And since then, we've had them oversee our facilities. This year, we decided to, between Dasher and myself, looked at our contract and said, I think right now this is coming to a natural change. When we were looking at filling some positions and some of the difficulty with it, we felt like this was probably beneficial both to Dasher and to the school district, that we bring that in-house. And so we are going to be posting 1.0 facilities director position, and we'll be interviewing that around May, May 20th, around that area. The assistant is something that we also contract out with Dasher, and that is a part-time position. We're going to be combining that with our teaching and learning and our IT to make that a full-time position. That becomes available due to our retirement in those other positions, and that will really help us in that area. So there's a little bit of a cost benefit here, a little bit of an efficiency. We're excited about bringing this in-house, and we will start advertising to build up a pool that we can interview there.
Kevin, how does one person take the place of a whole company in terms of the support of everybody? Or maybe there's not that many people.
No, I think that's a really good point, because when we went with Dasher, we liked it because of the organization and you had layers to help that person. When we started researching some of the districts around us and what they've been able to do with facilities position, I think we grew in confidence that we can train and support this person and provide that in-house. We used to have a maintenance position also under this contract. I think that kind of precipitated this discussion, and we had difficulty filling it. And so kind of in that process, we thought that maybe we could do a better job if that was in district. People know what ISD 277 is versus an outside group. We think that's part of the feedback that we got of getting a qualified candidate. We also think that maybe things like our benefits and how we're organizing this might bring in some people that would say that's a good position.
So it doesn't change the amount of custodial staff support that we have and things like that?
No.
This person is getting hired, will oversee the custodial staff that we have.
Who is employed by us?
Yes. Don't, this will be, so Dasher has a 1.0 facilities director for us. We're now making the change that that will be district instead of Dasher.
But the custodial staff?
The staff here are.
Oh, yeah.
Our whole custodial staff is West Tonka.
So, okay, so none of that changed?
No.
The supervision of it, yeah.
You'll see on action item F, I want to thank board members connected to working through individual contracts. So we have a number of different bargaining groups. One of those groups is a group of individuals. And so we met with a number of different individuals. We have that now, after reviewing it with the finance committee and board reps that serve as this group, we have that coming forward to you, and we're pleased to bring that negotiation to an end. We have action item G, GH, which are changes with our couple of community ed positions, and Scott Locke is here. Want to thank Scott for his leadership with this program. Scott's now in his second year as our community education director. One thing that he noticed is how we contracted out with some of our communication marketing, how we were kind of growing in our adult enrichment, and the more, the greater needs that we had in coordination with the marketing of our programs. Really made sense to divide this in two positions. Scott took time to take this through his team, the community ed advisory group, where he had their full support of moving this forward. He's got metrics in which he's going to track how this is marketing and the growth that we expect to see in our adult enrichment. Really pleased with how he approached that part of these positions, and will evaluate this again in a couple of years. With the community education program, we know how well we communicate that and make that consistent, where people are understanding what we offer is key to the success of that program. And so, Scott, is there anything that you would like to add that I?
No, the only thing is that we currently contract out for catalog and things like that, and we're looking to bring that in-house with this vision.
So what we did is, it used to be that our adult enrichment had a percentage of her job that was also with marketing. We now will have one person strictly with adult enrichment, but taking on a little bit of some organizational help for the department, and then we will have a marketing position as well. The next position that you see there has to do with Adventure Club and growth of that program. We have a really, really large Adventure Club program going to be happening this summer. It's a record enrollment for us. I think it speaks, one, to Scott's team and the programming that they offer. I think it also speaks to the convenience and how people appreciate having that in the community, and also the program design. And so it's, you come out of COVID, where numbers really dropped off, and people found different ways of providing these type of services. And to see this bounce back to record numbers, I think really speaks volumes to the program that's offered and the need for it. I mean, I think that's, it's a service to our community that parents, when it comes to the summer, they need some support to carry them from the school year to the school year. And so congratulations to Scott and his, Michelle and their team.
Kevin, can I take a minute? I want to thank you, I want to thank Scott, I want to thank Mike, as long as they're all here. One of the things Gary and I heard a couple months ago at our community ed meeting was that this preschool program for next year would, has, for years has filled up quickly, and they have to turn families away. And they were talking about doing like a lottery and would have like twenty to twenty-five families that have to turn away. And Gary and I said, we got, I went to Kevin and said, we got to find a way to do this. And they found a classroom. And they found a classroom at Hilltop, right? And so, you know, Kevin and Mike and, and Scott all worked on that and have found space. So we aren't, hopefully aren't turning anybody away, or very few, for next fall for preschool stuff. And I think that's huge if you get them here for preschool, you know, chances are much better they're going to stay for their school year. So my thanks to all three of you for that, too.
Thanks for recognizing that. I think it's a compliment to Scott and the program, but it's a real compliment to Mike and his staff because there's a lot of different competing needs always for a space. And if you have an empty space, they can think very quickly what else that can be used for. And to be a teammate and say, this is a need for preschool and to be able to evaluate that is heartwarming.
Hey Kevin, just a little clarification on that. So this FTE starts June first, but it's, it's not just a summer?
No, it'll go through the school, school year. Then we go to student management systems. This is a position that we've been working with our technology department and we've kind of revised some roles. This, we've kind of reduced some positions and we've restructured positions. And this is where we have one really talented individual that not only is going to help out our technology department, but he's going to work in that data for HR and also teaching and learning. And so Kyle Hugavine is the employee. He's done a wonderful job here. He has some great skill sets. And so really with an individual contract, we have the ability to make some adjustments. And this is a way that we feel like we've been able to present cost savings to technology and also expand service. And so I really want to compliment the team and then for Kyle for one, having this aptitude. So he's going to take on some duties, like I said, with finance, with technology, with teaching and learning and with HR. And why that all connects is it's how we use our data systems. And so he's able to pull, organize and populate data in a way that it's going to bring some things from being more, HR for example, more from paper form to digital form and bring some efficiency. So we're excited about this change. Then you have an exciting K and L and not K A here, K and L. We have our, we have Dustin here from Kraus Anderson who was involved in the awarding with John Norby from Kraus Anderson. We put out for bids two different packages. One was for our primary school technology and security upgrades. And so that's at Shirley Hills, it's at Hilltop and it's at the Early Learning Building. And what this is for is our lockdown capability in those buildings. It's for our, it's, for that area, it's the hardening of glass as you enter in some of our main entrances and it's some of our strobe and communication systems so that if we are in a lockdown, people understand that we are in a lockdown. The reason why we're doing the primary right now and not the middle school and the high school is the middle school and the high school packages will be connected to the larger project there. And when we're doing this kind of work, if we did it at, before the rest of the work, we'd be tearing out things that we just did. And so we are excited about prioritizing those security improvements. When we looked at our security improvements, we took time to meet with our police chiefs and our fire department. We talked to staff about how can we make meaningful improvements that hopefully can give our buildings a better, secure experience. And so for this bid package, we had a nice turnout. I think we, we did well with the budget on that and I don't know Dustin, if there's any real comment on that one that you'd like to?
One of the biggest things is we did get a lot of coverage. So I think when I spoke here before, we wanted to get like an average of about three contractors per bidding category and this job exceeded that. So we did get a lot of coverage. So we feel like we got competitive bids all around.
In the one area, carpentry was hard for us to get at this time and I just want to thank K A because they were calling, working, they do with these bid packages, make sure people are informed. But really, we, we just want to keep on informing the bases that we have bids and getting that out and so we were able to fill that as well. Then the other one is for our tennis courts. And the reason why the tennis courts was prioritized in the bus garage maintenance is it really fits in the timeframe. So sometimes you need lead times to get equipment and also you have to do it in the summertime. And with this being across the street, that work can go into the fall. It also allows us to keep courts for the kids because that will be something that gets ripped up later in projects. So it allows us to allow kids to keep their opportunities while they're, while they're here. We really had a large number of people that turned out on this, especially for the civil and the asphalt portions of it. So I feel like we got some really good coverage. Again, for tennis courts, we have twelve courts. Six of those courts will be lined with pickleball, giving twelve pickleball courts. There's going to be storage for pickleball and for tennis. There's going to be lights on six of these courts. There's going to be shade in area for seating viewing where one big improvement for our families, besides that there's not cracks, is that you are going to only have to look across two courts or look over a court to watch your competition. And we think that's, that's going to be a real benefit. We are going to have some parking there and then the parking will connect to when we do complete the parking over where the current tennis courts are. That can be the overflow to be able to support parking on those courts. Really pleased with the quality of the courts. And again, we also are pleased that we've worked with our civil engineer on post-tension concrete system that will extend the life of these courts. I think all of us have gone through the experience of what our old courts were and it's, this gives us greater confidence that the life of these courts are going to serve our, our community really well in the long future.
Higher ground too, right? So that should help just that's, or is that not a matter? It's more the?
The, the post-tension courts are going to be more rigid and so, and how that's constructed, probably soil becomes a little bit less of a factor, but they've engineered it so they will take out soil and put in soil that, to the spec so that can be successful. Anything on that Dustin?
Yeah, there is a sand surface. We're honoring the whole tennis court to help rent it for me.
Okay. I, I want to thank the facilities committee. They've been in a lot of meetings and done a lot of work. And I, I look at, you know, just Gary and Brian, this was, well, since you guys have been on the board, we've been talking about tennis courts, but now finding that we have a solution and Dave and Brian being on this now too, it's really exciting. It's exciting about having this be in front. We expect, we expect these to be fully done in the spring, but it, this fall, they should be in a really good shape. And so we're, we're excited about this work. Kraus will have a field superintendent helping oversee these projects as they go forward. With your action of accepting these bids, we will then start working with these contractors and start moving this, moving this ahead. Lastly, there are a couple of different staffing changes, which is M and N, which you'll be taking action on those as well. And so a lot of different action items. It's an exciting agenda because there's a lot of, lot of growth and good news here. Exciting to getting some of these bond dollars here at work and just want to thank the board again for your support of that coming to the community.
All right, the chair moves for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to discussion items. Chair moves for approval of action item eight A, approval of adding boys volleyball as a sport. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves approval of action item eight B, approval of self-insured dental renewal rates. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight C, approval of group medical insurance renewal with administrator change and premium increase. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Feel like I'm saying my ABCs here. Chair moves for approval of action item eight D, approval of expanding job duties of existing teaching and learning in I T E O E administrative system position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight E, approval of a one point oh facilities director position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item eight F, approval of individual contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Good job.
Good job on that. There was a lot to, lot to be done.
Brian and Brian, thank you guys. Chair moves for approval of action item eight G, approval of modification to the Westonka Community Education enrichment and marketing coordinator position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're excited to see what happens with that Scott. Chair moves for approval of action item eight H, approval of a one point oh FTE, Westonka Community Education Director and Marketing Coordinator, coordinator position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carries. Chair moves of approval of action item eight I, approval of one point oh FTE, Westonka Community Education Adventure Club Assistant Site Supervisor position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight J, approval of expanding the job duties of the current student management systems coordinator position. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair moves of approval of action item eight K, acceptance of bids and approval of contract award for ISD two seventy-seven primary technology and security upgrades. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair moves for approval of action item eight L, acceptance of bids and approval of contract award for Mount Westonka tennis court construction and bus garage updates. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Chair moves for approval of action item eight M, approval of resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of teaching contract of Elsa Wu, a one point oh FTE probationary teacher. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And chair moves for approval of action item eight N, approval of the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of teaching contract of Jennifer Esch, a one point oh FTE probationary teacher. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any other business anybody has to bring up? Not chair moves for adjournment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good one you guys. The school year's winding down.